Good evening. This fifth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Before we begin, I would like to take a quick moment of personal privilege to recognize Black History Month. To truly understand Baltimore, you must understand that Black history is our city's history. From Frederick Douglass's struggle for emancipation to Elijah Cummings' fight to establish a new era of voting rights in our time, our city has been shaped for generations by the struggle for truly equal civil rights for all Americans. That fight must continue today. As our nation faces a new and uncertain chapter, we must honor the sacrifices and contributions of those who have led this fight, not with words but with deeds. We must look within ourselves to find the courage to fight for the change our city, our nation, and our people so desperately need. Councilman Blanchard will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, and the invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Blanchard. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker?
Here.
Dorsey. Sorry, McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. President Cohen.
Here.
We have a quorum. We do have absences currently from Councilmember Dorsey and Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the Journal for the February tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the Journal is adopted. We'll now turn to bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero three five Gas Power Debris Removal Equipment Prohibition Enforcement for the purpose of clarifying and conforming certain provisions related to the enforcement of the prohibition of gas-powered debris-removal equipment. Lead sponsor Dorsey, co-sponsors Parker, Middleton, Gray, Blanchard.
This bill has been assigned to the Public Health and Environment Committee. We will now move to resolutions of the City Council. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero one zero R Good Cause Eviction Requests for State Action for the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass House Bill seven oh nine, Senate Bill six fifty-one, Good Cause Eviction, which would allow local jurisdictions to enact good cause eviction laws and protect residents from arbitrary discriminatory or retaliatory displacement from their homes and communities. Lead sponsor Ramos, co-sponsors Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Glover.
Councilmember Ramos, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This is a request for state action for the General Assembly to pass HB seven oh nine, SB six five one. We have done this request for state action for several years now. What these bills will do is make sure that it allows for jurisdictions to create our own laws relative to creating what's called good cause eviction. And that just means that landlords can't just evict people because they feel like it. And so we would be able to put our own law together if this passes in the General Assembly. You'll remember that we did pass a similar law during the pandemic as an emergency measure, but it was quickly thrown out because we did not have this authority by the General Assembly. These two bills give us that authority. So, without further ado, Mr. President, I want to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
And I move the resolution for immediate adoption.
Rules are suspended. Hang on. The rules are suspended.
Sorry. And I move the resolution for immediate adoption.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
Dorsey. Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
President Cohen?
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero one one R Request for State Action: Maryland House Bill ten oh six Protecting Sensitive Locations Act and Maryland Senate Bill nine seven seven Maryland Data Privacy Act. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass House Bill ten oh six, the Protecting Sensitive Locations Act, to ensure all citizens, regardless of their immigration or citizenship status, are safe in sensitive locations, and to pass Senate Bill nine seven seven, the Maryland Data Privacy Act, to prohibit the sharing of personal information with immigration enforcement officials. Lead sponsor Ramos, co-sponsors Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover.
Councilmember Ramos, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your support, colleagues. These two bills are very important for our immigrant community. The first one, as you heard, the Protecting Sensitive Locations Act, again, this is in the General Assembly, so we are asking the General Assembly to pass these pieces of legislation. But they would establish what a sensitive area is, which would include hospitals, it would include places where people come to get help, it would include schools, it would include those kinds of situations. And so we want to make sure that people feel safe when they're getting their basic needs taken care of, but also that they are, you know, children are feeling safe when they get to school, et cetera. So, we're looking forward to the, hopefully, the passage of this legislation. And then the second one is Senate Bill nine seven seven, the Data Privacy Act, and this would require that no local government or state government would share information with immigrant enforcement, which, again, is very important because we want to create, we want to protect our immigrant communities. I just want to give you two data points here. In the Baltimore metro area, immigrants, whether they're documented or not, contribute four point two billion dollars in taxes and one point four billion dollars in state and local revenues, and two point eight billion in federal revenues. So, all of our immigrant communities are contributing to our economy and are very important residents in our, in our communities. It is also estimated that immigrant-owned businesses sustain more than fourteen thousand jobs in the city. So, I'm requesting that we ask the General Assembly to pass these two bills to protect a very critical, critical component of our population in our city. And without further ado, Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
And I move the...
Hang on, I'm sorry. Councilmember Parker?
Please stand. Please stand. Thank you, Mr. President. I just, a question of curiosity. I know we're moving for immediate adoption. If one was to want to speak as well as in favor of this prior to a vote, when would be the appropriate time to do that? Before or after those rules were suspended?
If four rules are suspended typically, but in this case, the chair will recognize Councilmember Parker.
I appreciate that. We were rolling through it very quickly. I thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilperson Ramos, for bringing this before us. Just to echo the council, the councilperson's thoughts on this matter, just in the last two days, we've had immigration enforcement pick up two neighbors outside of grocery stores in Highland Town, one today, one yesterday. The chilling effects on schools, on food distribution, on the movement of residents through the community has been very pronounced across the district in the last, last two months or so. So, really appreciate the General Assembly is taking action both on data privacy and on sensitive locations. As somebody who's been a steward of a sensitive location, both a preschool and a religious community for the last fifteen years, to have that protection taken away was, was expected and yet, and yet fairly shocking in terms of what it meant for freedom of religious expression and the ability of children to gather safely for education. That's true in our school, where we had been able to speak confidently with some level of assurance because of federal policy that children would be safe here and that people would be safe coming to church or coming to worship or wherever the case may be. And I know that we've had those conversations now where there's limitations to what we can promise to the kids in our care, or the people that want to come and worship, or the people that come to get food in our, in our facility. And the same conversations are happening at religious institutions across the city, around the state, and all of our local schools, especially our local schools in the southeast, where, you know, upwards of fifty, sixty, seventy-five, eighty-five percent of our students are from immigrant families, and many of those are particularly vulnerable in this moment. So, I really appreciate Councilperson Ramos bringing it to us, and just wanted to make sure I was speaking on behalf of my residents before we move into a vote. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilman Parker. Anyone else want to offer any words before we suspend the rules? All right. Councilmember Ramos?
Should I make that motion again to suspend the rules?
Yeah, if you could.
Sure, no problem. Mr. President, I suspend the, want to make a motion to suspend the rules for immediate adoption?
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended.
And I move the resolution for immediate adoption.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos? President Cohen?
Aye.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Thank you, Councilmember Ramos, Councilmember Parker, both of you for your leadership on this issue. I would like to thank Chairman Schleifer, Vice Chair Glover, and the members of the Legislative Investigations Committee and our colleagues across the council for last week's hearing into rate increases at BGE. In twenty twenty-three, when the Public Service Commission was debating the approval of BGE's multi-year rate plan, we took action as a council to demand that they say no to another blank check for BG&E. We stood up for the residents of our city and said that their family's bottom line should be more important than BGE's earnings statement. And as we've seen in recent months, the increases that our residents are seeing are far worse than BGE led them to believe. What we feared and predicted has indeed come to pass. So today, I am introducing a resolution calling on the Public Service Commission to end its multi-year ratemaking pilot and take urgent action to off-ramp BGE's multi-year rate plan by canceling the next round of rate increases scheduled for twenty twenty-six. City Council is the part of government closest to the people, and tonight we are fighting for the people we represent. Seniors are being forced to choose between oxygen and electricity. Families are being hit with bills as high as fourteen hundred dollars. I'm proposing to introduce the resolution on your desks in direct response to what we heard from our residents at Thursday's hearing and thus after Wednesday's hopper deadline. Thus, per Rule nine dash one C, I move to introduce this bill filed after the hopper deadline. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The resolution will be introduced from the floor. Madam Clerk?
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero one two R Request for State Action End the Multi-Year Rate Plan Pilot and Cancel the Plan Twenty-Twenty-Six Baltimore Gas and Electric Distribution Rate Increase. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland Public Service Commission to end its multi-year rate plan pilot and to invoke the off-ramp provision to cancel the plan Twenty-Twenty-Six Baltimore Gas and Electric Company, BGE Gas and Electric Distribution Rate Increases. Lead sponsor Cohen, co-sponsors Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Jones, Glover, Ramos.
Please note, Councilman Schleifer would like to be added as co-sponsor and Councilman Blanchard as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption. Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. I move the resolution be adopted. The clerk will call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray? Yes. Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos? President Cohen?
Aye.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Thank you. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the council meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will proceed with reading short titles. We will begin with bills from the Budget and Appropriations Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two four Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Board of Elections, one million four hundred seventeen thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
Mr. President, we held a hearing on February the eighteenth, and we recommend the bill favorable as amendments. The amendments were technical in nature, correcting language issues, and at this time, I move the amendments for adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
And I would like to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway?
Aye.
Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two five General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer M through R Debt Service, Service one-two-three, General Debt Service, to the Department of Finance, Service seven oh three, Payroll, four million two hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the eighteenth. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I also move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two six Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Fire Department, thirty-three million three hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred eighty dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman, Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the eighteenth. I do recommend this bill favorable as amended. The amendment is technical in nature, correcting language issues within a bill.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Okay, and I move the... Okay. I move the bill favorable as amendment, amended, and I would also like to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader.
Need to first move the bill as amended, and then we'll get to second to third reader. So, can you just move the bill favorably as amended one more time?
I move the bill favorably as amended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Not a problem. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This will be, this bill will be printed for third reading.
And I move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two seven General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer General Fund Balance to the Health Department, Service three fifteen, Emergency Services, five million two hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Members will note, there were typos in the original bill. The new version is being circulated to members' desks. I recognize Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. A hearing was held on February the eighteenth, and I recommend the bill favorable as amended. These bills were, excuse me, the amendment is technical in nature, just correcting language errors.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This will, bill will be printed for third reading.
I move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two eight General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer Department of General Services to Department of Law, Service eight sixty-one, Controversies, one million five hundred fourteen thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars.
Chair recognizes Chair McCray.
A hearing was held on February the eighteenth. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader on the same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero two nine Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Liquor Board, two hundred and fifty thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars.
President recognizes Chair McCray.
Mr. President, we held a hearing on February the eighteenth, and I recommend the bill favorable as amended. This amendment is technical in nature, just correcting some language errors. At this time, I do move the amendments for adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. That was depressing. Please say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Aye.
McCray?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos? Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero three zero Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Police Department, three million two hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the eighteenth. I recommend the bill favorable as amended. This amendment is technical in nature, correcting language issues, and I move the amendments for adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
And I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I move to invoke Rule twelve one to advance this bill from second to third reader same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero three one Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Department of Public Works, five million nine hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the eighteenth. I recommend the bill favorable as amended, and the amendments are technical in nature, just correcting language errors. I move the amendments for adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
Mr. President, I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve one for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Conway? Schleifer? Middleton? Torrance? Gray? Bullock? Porter? Blanchard? Jones? Glover? Ramos?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero three two Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation Recreation and Parks, six million nine hundred seventy-three thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars.[1615.08]
President recognizes Chair McCray.
Thank you. We held a... Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on February the Eighteenth, and I recommend the bill favorable as amended. The amendments are technical in nature, correcting language errors, and I move the amendments at this time for adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I move to invoke Rule Twelve-One to advance this bill from second to third reader same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-Three, General Operating Appropriation Transfer, M through R Debt Service, Service One-Two-Three, General Debt Service, to the Office of the Sheriff, Service Eight-Eight-Two, Deputy Sheriff Enforcement, Four Million Five Hundred Sixty-four Thousand Three Hundred Forty-One Dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the Eighteenth. I move this bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
I'd like to invoke Rule Twelve-One to advance this bill from second to third reader same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill moves to third reader today.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-Four, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, M through R Debt Service, Service One-Two-Three, General Debt Service, to the Department of Transportation, Service Six-Eighty-Three, Street Management, One Million Thirty-nine Thousand Eight Hundred One Dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilmember McCray.
A hearing was held on February the Eighteenth. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Rule Twelve-One to advance this bill from second to third reader same day.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill moves to third reader. We now move to bills from the Housing and Economic Development Committee on second reader. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-One-Nine, Midtown Community Benefits District and Management Authority Establishment.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on February Eighteenth. It was recommended as favorable amendments. There are committee amendments on the colleague... On my colleague's desk. These amendments include... Amendment Number One, amendment to include the home state tax credit in the formula for the surcharge, as well as an amendment to remove the Board of Elections from the list of those conducting elections for the benefits district, and amendment to allow each real property parcel to vote and the owner thereof, and then an amendment to shorten the election period to twenty-one days from thirty days. This allows the elections to take place timely enough for us to have all of the votes in and to approve the district in order to... In time for the tax bills to go out. Just being transparent. I move the amendments favorably, Mr. President.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments say aye. Those opposed say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. This bill moves to third reader today.
Mr. President, I move to suspend Rule Twelve-One for same-day advancement of this bill on third reader.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill moves to third reader today. We turn now to bills on third reader for final passage. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-One-Nine, Midtown Community Benefits District and Management Authority Establishment. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved. I want to thank Councilman Blanchard for his leadership in fighting for the people of Midtown. I want to thank Chairman Torrance for conducting a really good hearing. I want to thank the administration for working in lockstep with us on this bill, and I want to thank the folks from Midtown that participated in the hearing and that have come tonight to make your voices heard. Thank you. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Four, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Board of Elections, One Million Four Hundred Seventeen Thousand Four Hundred Fifty-One Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Five, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, M through R Debt Service, Service One-Two-Three, General Debt Service, to the Department of Finance, Service Seven-O-Three, Payroll, Four Million Two Hundred Twenty-Eight Thousand One Hundred Seventy-Three Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Six, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, Thirty-three Million Three Hundred Sixty-One Thousand Seven Hundred Eighty-Three Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Yes. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Six, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, General Fund Balance to Health Department, Service Three-One-Five, Emergency Services, Five Million Two Hundred Fifty-One Thousand Four Hundred Twenty-Nine Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Eight, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, Department of General Services, to Department of Law, Service Eight-Six-One, Controversies, One Million Five Hundred Fourteen Thousand Three Hundred Fifty-One Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Nine, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor Board, Two Hundred Fifty Thousand Three Hundred Twenty-Three Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-Zero, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, Three Million Two Hundred Seventy-Five Thousand Three Hundred Eighty-Four Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-One, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, Five Million Nine Hundred Eighty-Two Thousand Seven Hundred Fifty-Five Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Eight, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Recreation and Parks, Six Million Nine Hundred Seventy-Three Thousand Five Hundred Forty-Seven Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Eight, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, M through R Debt Service, Service One-Two-Three, General Debt Service, to the Office of the Sheriff, Service Eight-Eight-Two, Deputy Sheriff Enforcement, Four Million Five Hundred Sixty-four Thousand Three Hundred Forty-One Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Aye. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-Four, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, M through R Debt Service, Service One-Two-Three, General Debt Service, to the Department of Transportation, Service Six-Eighty-Three, Street Management, One Million Thirty-nine Thousand Eight Hundred One Dollars. Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer.